Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the meeting of October 20th, 2020. We're first going to start with the invocation led by Deanne Davis, and then I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I would just ask that everybody put their microphones on on mute, except for those in the public that are called on during time for public comment. And at the end of the for anyone else that has something to address counsel with, I'll give free time for anybody to ask questions. And there is also two public hearings scheduled for this evening. They'll start around 7:15. So at that time, anybody that wants to address counsel on those two issues will be welcome to do so at that time, too. In the meantime, just leave your microphones on mute, please. And Deanne, can you lead us an invocation?
Lord, we ask for your presence and your blessing tonight on our community and on our nation. Be with our leaders and our volunteers as they serve our community. Give them wisdom as they make decisions to keep our citizens safe. Bring peace and unity to our nation. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Have roll call, please.
Becker.
Here.
Souter.
Here.
McBane.
Here.
Liston.
Here.
Detillio.
Here.
Noel.
Here.
Blakeman.
Here.
Willard. You're muted.
Here.
You're muted. Thank you. Hudson.
Here.
You all received the meeting minutes from October 6th. Any comments or questions on those? Hearing none, they will stand as submitted. We have two public hearings this evening at 7:15, one regarding a zone change from R1 to C2. At 625 Springfield Road, as well as the second one regarding the vacating of a portion of Mary Alley and Long Alley. So we'll break out at 7:15. We'll stop what we're doing for those. You all receive the Park Recreation and Cemetery Board Meeting Minutes from September 28th, 2020, as well as Planning Commission Meeting Minutes for October 13th. Any comments on either of those? If not, the first person designed it appears not actually even printed on the agenda, but I think I saw Crystal in the waiting room here. I think she wants to update counsel on some changes to the 5K race for Christmas. If you want to, there you go.
All right, can you hear me?
Yep.
All right. So because of the light show changes, we have to change the directions of the course a little bit. And I don't know if you guys have it yet, but I did send Lance a copy of it. Basically, we're going to start at Funland and head out of the park down Springfield Road. Air not down Springfield Road, but out of the park on that Springfield Road exit area. Head down East Park Avenue on the street. And then from there, we're going to run all the way up to Main Street. As soon as we can get onto the sidewalk, we're going to get onto the sidewalk. And then we have to make a right onto North Main Street. Again, we're going to use the sidewalk, so we don't have to worry about closing down the roads. I've already talked to the police department. They're approving us on this course, the way it is set up. And then after we get to, I don't know what the alley name is. But it is on the Generations Dance Studio is right there. That's where the race course is going to go down from there. Sorry, I don't have the map in front of me because of Zoom. And then it's going to loop into the park down by Herbster and then follow the the route like it normally would follow out there in the Terra Verde section, and from there come back into the park. Loop around again and then turn right into where the entrance of the park is right now. For the light show. So it's kind of be following the same course as the light show itself. Does that make sense? I'm sorry, because I don't have with Zoom, I can't pull it up in front of me.
I'd say as long as, as long as the chief doesn't have any problem with it, we probably shouldn't either.
Yeah, we already approved it, too.
We looked at it, you know, how the events coordinator, Kevin Claus, he reviews all those things. And we'll make it happen. We have to be flexible because of some of the construction, the other things. So we'll make it happen and get them where they need to be and try to make sure everybody's safe while doing.
All right, we have almost 200 runners registered already for the two nights total.
That's great. Well, can I have a motion to approve the changes?
Second.
Any comments? Have roll call, please.
Becker.
Yes.
Souter.
Yes.
McBane.
Yes.
Liston.
Yes.
Detillio.
Yes.
Noel.
Yes.
Very good. All done. Next up, we're going to have Nicole Ice speak on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, requesting permission to hold a very Columbiana Christmas Open Air Market event on December 5th from 1 to 8 on Main Street and request to enact a Dora from 1 to 9.
Hello, everyone.
Howdy.
Happy Tuesday.
It is.
So the Columbiana Area Chamber of Commerce would like to request the approval to host a very Columbiana Christmas. It's going to take place December 5th, 2020. This event entails socially distanced activities for families such as Christmas tree decorating in the pocket park, caroling, hot chocolate, and axe throwing. We are consulting with the County Health Board to make sure we are in compliance with their recommended guidelines. We are also requesting the closure of South Main from the circle to AAA. And that would be between the hours of 1 and 8. And we are also requesting the Dora from 1 until 9:00 PM. We're asking for the extra hour for the Dora because in the previous year, we need a little bit of time to make sure that people have gotten rid of their drinks. And that gives us an hour to make sure that that's taken care of properly. So.
Where are you going to be throwing the axes?
So we actually have a company that is coming in that has, they do their own like chain link fencing. So they will be organizing the entire area where it's at. Once we get approval, we will submit a site plan to you guys that we have to submit to the health board to where everything will be. We also have, and these were just ideas because we weren't sure if we were going to be able to move forward with it. We have ice sculptures and stump sculptures and things like that. We have storytelling for children. Just things that used to be a fun Christmas thing that some people may be missing out on this year because of everything that's going on. And we just are trying to bring a little bit of that to Columbiana.
Any questions for Nicole? Like to entertain a motion to approve the request for the, to enact the Dora from 1 to 9, as well as approve the event.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the event and the door on the condition that they satisfy the board of health requirements.
I'll second that.
Any additional comments?
Hope we can make it happen. I mean, try to get some normalcy back into town. This sounds like a great event.
We're going to try, man. That's, that's the goal. We have to have some of it. So we're going to try.
Can I add something to it? Also, we're going to be providing, and this is Eric Offenberg, by the way, from Executive Director of the Chamber. But we're also going to be providing an opportunity for traffic to come into downtown for some of our downtown businesses. As well as artisans that would normally take part in craft fairs. You're not allowed to say fair anymore. So it's an open air market. But providing an opportunity for those vendors to be able to have a place to sell their to practice their trade, basically, and be there downtown. Folks can pick up Christmas gifts and do whatever they need to do. So just bringing out some traffic to downtown socially distanced and safe is the main purpose.
I think it's a great idea.
Very good.
Yeah, I agree. I think this goes with like what, what we did a couple of weeks ago with the Halloween stuff. Anything we can do to bring some entertainment back to town and make life feel normal, I think is a good thing. We have roll call.
Souter.
Yes.
McBane.
Yes.
Liston.
Yes.
Detillio.
Yes.
Noel.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, that passed. Rob, thank you, Nicole. You're good to go.
Thanks, guys.
Rob, I don't know how, how much time you're going to need to present, but we have to stop at 7:15. So
Yes.
You need, you can cram it in three minutes. I can't hear him.
Say it again, Brad.
Well, we, we have at 7:15, we have a heartbreak. I'm just wondering how much time you'll, you'll need because I don't want you to have to start and then stop and start over again.
Yeah, probably a good 15 minutes. Okay, 10 minutes, make sure I be, I'm sure we're going to open up the session, have another five minutes.
Yeah. All right. Well, then why don't we do the jump into the public hearings? Because I don't, I don't want to interrupt you a minute into this and then have to start over again.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Well, by the time we make the motions to go into the public hearing, we'll probably be around 7:15. So can I have a motion to go into public hearing regarding a zone change from R1 to C2 at 625 Springfield Road?
Throw a move.
Second.
Any discussion? Have roll call, please.
McBane.
Yes.
Liston.
Yes.
Detillio.
Yes.
Noel.
Yes.
Becker.
Yes.
Souter.
Yes.
Very good. So at this point, anybody who has joined the meeting from the public that would like to address counsel in regards to the issue of this zone change. Now would be the proper time to unmute your microphone. And I'll, I'll give you a fair amount of time. As long as you're continuing to make a point, I would just ask that if there's multiple people that we only speak one at a time, so that we can have a proper discussion with letting people get their, their thoughts across, even if they may not be the same as everyone else. This will be a little, little tricky via Zoom. We haven't, haven't had a public hearing yet since all of this started, but point, I'd like to open it up to anyone from the public that would like to address counsel.
Yes, I'm, I'm Bill Black. I live at 611 Springfield Road. I'm not used to Zoom. I'm used to doing Solitaire on this thing, and I can't figure out how to move you guys around. So I guess we'll go this direction.
Well, if you open the cooperate corners of view button, I think you can hit it might, might show differently.
No, it's fine. I'm, I'm trying to be funny. It didn't work. Yes, my understanding is that what you're trying to do is to rezone from R1 to C2. The property at 625 Springfield Road. I think you need to know a bit of the character of the neighborhood, and most of you probably do. But number one, we have a very dangerous intersection with State Route 14. If any of you come down State Route 14 towards Springfield Road from town, you will see a sign that says dangerous intersection. There's been frequent accidents there. I can't tell you how many, but I'm sure the police chief can. For my own self and, and other people that I've talked with, it's difficult to get out of this street at times because of Route 14 traffic. And we've also got Heck Road that's coming in from the other side. And Springfield Road used to be when I was young with the back way into Columbiana as opposed to East Park. Speeding is common on this road despite a 25 mile an hour speed limit. It's a narrow street. It's no cur, no curves. And I measured it today as at least in front of my house, it's about 20 foot wide, wide road. So it's not a very wide road. If you look out toward Route, Route 14, that area out there is commercially zoned, the way station, the Tik Tok gas station. The former Columbiana Floral Wholesale and the Salem Regional Medical Facility out there, all of those. All of those make sense to be in a commercially zoned area. They have access out to, out to, to Route 14. The regional medical facility actually has access to East Park, which is a, is a better traveled road. I find that a vacant, a building that's vacant and medical office was built in 1981. And some of you may know what the history of that is. My assumption originally was that this was a residence that somebody just automatically started using as a doctor's office. And after so many years, it, it became a, a medical player became allowed there. I'm beginning to look when I look at the drawings and things, it looks to me like that was built specifically as a medical facility. I have no problems with having that type of a medical facility here. And, and the planning commission has actually given, has given their approval for that type of facility there. What you're talking about doing now, and the other thing you need to know is that the remainder of the neighborhood up to Firestone Park is residential. Includes duplexes and condominiums across the street, but it is residential. The paragraph seven of your zoning code tells you what is actually in an R2 zone area. I'm sorry, in a C2 zone area. And that's where I start to get nervous. Dry cleaning and laundry agencies. Barber and beauty shops. Shoe repair shops, tailors and dressmakers. Retail uses such as apparel, art, photography, stationery, notions, hobbies, toys, books, music, flowers, jewelry, gift sales, drugs, optical goods and groceries, business services, including interior decorating offices and novelty and business forms printing. The retail sale of plumbing fixtures and hardware stores. That sounds to me like it could include a dollar store and one of the numerous dollar stores that seem to spring up everywhere. That is not what I would consider a suitable use for that area. The problem is if you change to a C2 zoning, you have committed it. It is done. There's not a thing you can do about it. You've already given permission to use this as a, as a business and that type of thing. That's the simplest way to, to handle this. You still have the control over it. If, if someone comes in with a plan or a, or a dollar store or gas station or whatever else. You, you have control as long as it's still in an R1 zoning area. But that it's, but you've given it a use. A use variance. Once you change it to C2 and they come in with a proper plan that fits the zoning code for that area, there's not a thing that you can do about it. You can't, you can't, you can't turn them down on. I guess a, a, a dollar store would not, would not fit in that area. Doctor's office, you've got people coming in. You may have quite a few people coming in, but they'd be like an hour apart. You may have 10, 10 to come in for an hour and then they go out. Dollar store, you've got, you've got 10 people in maybe 10 minutes or 15 minutes that's coming in and out of there. The owner's ability to sell this property for additional money doesn't justify all of us on this street losing $10,000 to $20,000 on our properties due to increased traffic at the intersection. You would not want a dollar store on the corner of Port Street and Herbster. We don't want it here. So for that reason, I would suggest that you, you turn down this zone change and continue with the use designation. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to give you a little bit of background because I was one of the votes from the planning commission. This was originally submitted to the planning commission as a request to change to C4. And we completely disagreed with that. That, that was too large, but our thinking with C2, because the, the use was already there in, in that building and had been expanded on to. You're not going to find someone to buy that as a home. And we don't want a building just sitting empty to the point where it becomes unusable. So we thought, because it was contiguous to the medical facility right next door to it. If we kept it C2, the sit, the setback requirements and, and the, the lines on the property that they have to put up fencing as far as like, like shrubbery and things of that nature to, to block it out. It actually is more conducive to making the property useful while, while shielding it from the, the neighbors there. And left it so that the, the building could be reused rather than just have a, a lot sit to decay. That, that was our, our thinking on it because it's, it's sat empty for, for many years now.
I see that was, that was built in 1981, and it appears to me that it was built as a doctor's office in 1981. The both of the, according to the, the county documents, both sections of that building were built in 1981, which surprised me because I thought it looked like a residential structure. I thought it was where someone had, had just taken a residential home and, and added on to it or something. But both parts of it were done. I'm, I, I don't know whether they had approval from the city at the time or not. That is owned by the, by the hospital at the moment. But it's, as I said, you lose your, you lose your control. You, you've already given them permission to, to use this as a doctor's office. Or as a, an attorney's office, or any of those kinds of things. You have already done that. There's no good reason for you to go to, to a, to a commercial zoning, which takes all the control away from you.
Well, but if we leave it residential, it's, it's more confined yet with what we could possibly put into a residential area that's commercial.
I agree with you. It's, it's, it's going to make it a much harder for someone to put a dollar store on that, on that lot.
It's going to make it, it's going to make it harder for anyone, in my opinion, to do anything useful with the building. I mean, from a neighbor, if you, if you have a building that, that starts falling apart because no one's using it and not taking care of it. It does as much negative to your property value as traffic from a lawyer's office.
That, that reverts back to a residential area then, and someone can build a residence on it.
Yeah, but they'd have the cost of demolishing what's on there. Again, it's, it would just make it useless. Well, I mean, I understand where you're, you're coming from. I, I do think that C2 from, we discussed this probably 30, 45 minutes during the planning commission meeting of, of the benefit of C2 with the, the restrictions that are on it. It makes it just about impossible for anything that would be out of place in, on that street next to the medical center to, to fit. I don't want to debate with you. I just wanted to give you the background on why we, we made that recommendation. Oh, um, you, you have anything else, Mr. Black, or should we move on to?
I, one of the things you're talking about, it makes it very difficult to do, but they're talking about putting in one of the things that you could do would be to have a dry cleaners in there. You know, I just, I can't picture that much traffic on, on this street with that dangerous intersection up there. We already have. We already have as much as we can, we can handle here.
Okay, I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your input. Anyone else that would like to address counsel on this this evening?
Hi, my name's Nathaniel Church. I live at 624 Springfield. I guess I kind of have a question. Is it possible to get like a 1296 for non-conforming uses in that chapter preemptively as the purchaser? Because as I understand, they want to purchase and have a law firm, which seems like a very similar use to what you guys are currently allowing. But the C2, it just seems like it leaves a lot open ended. I understand it makes it easier to sell. But at the same time, it definitely changes the character of the neighborhood. So I guess, is there any reason you couldn't allow that non-conforming use to continue?
Do you have an answer for that, Mark? You're muted. Mark, you're muted.
Okay, sorry about that. The building was built as a medical office and that was 1980. I thought it was 80, but it was 1981. It has been that the entire time. If it's a non-conforming use, then yes, that does give the city a lot of control. But the problem is you cannot expand a non-conforming use, which means if somebody wanted to put an addition on that building to make it a bigger law office, shall we say, you can't do it. So once you decide it's a non-conforming use, you are further limiting what can be done. At this point, it's vacant. And I'm not even sure without really looking into it, it's been a medical office. If that now includes a law office, even though an office is an office, maybe not. So, you know, the problem with non-conforming use, you can't really expand it at all. Not only you can't change it, you really can't expand it. So for example, if you want to change the entrance ways, you really are going to have a hard time doing that. And planning commission is actually going to have a hard time giving you permission to do it. That's the concern I would have with the non-conforming use idea.
I guess, can you tell me how it's, I guess, quantified now? I mean, I understand it's owned as an R1, but to function as a medical office, I'm like, is it a variance? Or what happened to make it a medical office?
That would go back Nathaniel to 1981. I may have gray hair, but it even predates me. And I'm not trying to be funny. It, it predates everybody that's you're seeing on this Zoom conference. Exactly how the building was built. I'm not sure George Heinemann's on this. I'm not sure if he's hearing this, but he's lived there quite some time. It's always been a medical office and it was built in an R1 district. I can't offer you an explanation of how that happened.
I guess my question is, why would it, or is it, or would it be difficult for the potential owner that's looking to purchase this to just continue in the, I guess, variation that's been granted? Why do we need for a C2?
Let me give you a quick answer to that. On June 9th, the City Planning Commission gave them approval to use of the building for office space.
So, so the only reason to grant them a C2 is so when the, they sell, they can, I guess, get more money or it's easier for them to sell.
Yeah, I, I mean, all the, all the, all the comments that Attorney Hudson made. I'm, I'm saying, yeah, that sounds great to me. I mean, I know it doesn't to him, but I, I want that control. I, yeah, I want that control on my street. Uh, if I were in a commercial zone or something like that, yeah, I can, I can see. You know, yeah, let's bring in a, a, another brewery or something like that, but not, uh, not in this residential neighborhood. We can keep control. It can be, council can keep control of this area. Uh, uh, until it becomes an R two zone.
It can, and just so that you understand, I have no preference. You know, one way or another, I'm basically trying to, you know, just trying to answer questions. Uh, some of which I can answer, some of which I can't. You're right, Mr. Black, there is certainly more control, but you've got a situation that. It doesn't fit. And I think what planning commission looked at was everything else from there to. Spring to on Route fourteen was C four, but that didn't mean that should be C four. It should be C two, which limits the usefulness. You could say it limits the usefulness of the property. Because even a dollar store is probably going to be hard pressed to use. This is a one point three acre lot. I'm not sure how much space most dollar stores need, but I think a little bit more than that. So you're looking at a piece of property that I think planning commission may have felt and. Can answer that. If it's C two, they are able to regulate it. Um, again, I sat at that, sat through that meeting. I don't vote on anything at planning commission. And he may be able to answer that better than I. But I think one of the things planning commission did look at was C two gave them better control. And limited it far more than anything such as C four would. But at the same time, it made the property. More in line with what it has always been used at. You're right. It would make more sense if that started out as a residence, but it didn't.
Yeah, I mean, and, and just so you know, Mr. Black, I, I have no stake in the game. I, I don't, I don't care one way or another, but. The, the planning commission, um, routinely does whatever we can possibly do to bring growth to the community. But try to do so in a, in a way that doesn't harm neighbors. You know, the reason I got involved on city council eleven years ago is because I didn't like something that went across the street from my house. I went to a meeting, got involved and that's how I'm here. So I, I would, I, I would look at this through your eyes. I, I, I would not want to do something that would affect my home value or what I have to live next door to. We looked at it like you're already living next door to a medical facility. Um, a medical office and, and if the office use was going to stay the same, but we can make it happen. We don't like doing spot zoning and that's technically what the recommendation was. Because they wanted C four, it would make sense continuously to keep it C four. If we were going to make the change, but we went C two to really tighten down what could go, but still make it useful. That, that was our thinking. Um, but I, I don't, I don't know, um, the gentleman that was, um. Proposing per, purchasing the lot. I know he wasn't happy with the planning commission's decision to, to make a recommendation of C two. So, I mean, we, we, we're, we're trying to, um, walk a fine line of moving property where it needs to. Uh, to do what we need to do to help make it move, um, while still keeping the, the neighborhood, um, the way that it goes. I mean, one of your council members lives down the street. So, I mean, no, no one here, uh, or on the planning commission is trying to do anything to affect your neighborhood. Um, but I, I just wanted to verbally give you the, the, the background for why we. Did what we did. The action we did was try to restrict it while still making the property viable for someone to use it.
Yeah, it might, it might be okay if the, if it wasn't for that traffic situation up there with that dangerous intersection. I just, I can't see. I can't see allowing anything to expand, um, the possibility even to expand. Uh, with that, with that traffic, uh, intersection up there.
Has the property been sold yet? Has it been closed on?
I don't think so, but I don't, I don't know, but, uh, do you know that Lance? You're, you're muted also Lance.
Anyways, m- my position is we live directly across from that at six thirty. Now I'd agree with Mr. Black. I mean. C two just leaves it too open ended for something down the road. And there, there's no way of predicting the future, obviously, but we don't know how the, uh. Residents of the people that live in the area, uh, for example, like George. I hope George lives there forever, but if he ever decided to move. And someone would acquire that property, there'd be plenty of room for some kind of commercial. Building or business that would not be conducive to our community. It's a quiet community and concerns with traffic like Mr. Black has said and. And then just the, um. The noise and the quiet and the property values that all ties in, but is there, is it any way that. Under the current zoning that they can stay there as an attorney's office? Have I missed that or does it have to be changed?
Uh, we, we believe that it has to be changed because, uh, i- if, if we gave the. The use for what it was already existing, it's a medical office. Uh, they want to put in a legal office, even though it's still office, uh, the municipal attorney Mark Hudson suggested that. Um, we don't, we don't know that that could fit legally in transfer because it's a different use.
What are the, what are the legal requirements of the current owner of leaving a vacated building? I mean, if the thing sits there for ten or fifteen years or whatever, and this doesn't get resolved, there's. There could be buildings all over the community that just set deteriorate with no accountability to the person that owns them.
Well, no, they would have accountability if they just let it sit and, and rot.
Well, it's, it's kind of been like that now. It's been setting for, like you said, a couple of years. And it's like, uh, I don't know even who the current owners are in their financial.
Yeah, the Salem Regional Medical Center owns it.
So.
That's correct.
Sorry, so.
The well is deep.
If, if the other medical center beside it is a C four. Say someone bought that and leveled both of them. Could you put like a C four, um. Uh, business in there that would overflow into the C two and.
No, it would have setbacks. That's why we wanted, that's why we went the C two route. Because it really c- cuts at the, the stop to that.
Even if they, even if they, uh, buy it and use that as a parking lot, you know.
You still are going to be limited to this use as for a C two property. I don't care if it's. Doesn't matter to me if it's the same owner. Um, you know, if you look at the code, C two allows certain things. If you look at the code, C four allows certain things. But you can't really mix the two and say, well. You know, I own both of them, so I'm going to put a C two use on a C four lot or a C four use on a. C two lot. You just can't do that. Any type of application. If somebody were to buy both properties, knock the regional medical center's office building down. They'd still have to come to planning commission. They would still have to meet all of the requirements. Um, before they were able to utilize the property.
So Lance, do we know if they have purchased the building yet?
I believe it's contingent upon. This, this action.
Okay. How did it slip through the cracks all these years running a business out of a residential?
That, no one, no one knows. I mean, uh, clear back from, was voted in nineteen eighty one. It doesn't show how anyone was, was given the ability to put it there. It just is. Uh, that's what Mark was saying. We, we can't find any, anything for the use for it and it's R one. So, I mean. As it sits right now, no one else can use it for, for anything. If it changes hands, it's, it's.
Unless, unless they purchase and tear it down and build residential there.
Yeah, and I can't imagine the cost prohibitiveness of that would make it so that no one would ever do it.
We still have our tax abatements, right?
Well, yeah, but I mean, the cost of leveling a building. And it kind of. You're going to do.
I think land's a bit of a premium in the community is, you know, a lot of it's not available, so. People want to settle here. They may do that. We can't predict the feasibility of what someone's finances are, but. I, I just, I'm with, um. My thoughts are I'm just concerned with the open end in this of a C two.
Well, yeah, in, in.
Pardon me?
I was gonna say, my opinion on this is if every neighbor that borders it, uh, would rather live next to a vacant building. Uh, in indefinitely, I, I, I really don't care.
Do they have to maintain it though? Do they have to maintain it and keep it?
I, I can't imagine that we would know the ins- inside of it. I mean.
No, I mean externally, at least with the exterior.
Yeah, I mean, we have like grass ordinances for grass height and things of that nature. Yeah, uh, I mean, the, uh, we've, we've done it multiple times over the last several years where we've made people clean up. The exterior, replace things on them or, or get action and tear them down. Uh, but that's a long road to hoe and I don't think that property is anywhere in that kind of shape.
Right.
I think, I think Salem, uh. Hospitals have the resources to take care of that property. And that's, and they should have looked into or checked into with a little foresight to, you know, this situation right now.
I think the city's been very generous in giving them that use designation and, uh, once, once that property is vacant for a number of years. My understanding at least is that the zoning reverts that, that you, the use reverts back to R one when it's, when it's not been used for. When it's not grandfathered in any longer, the, the use reverts back to that. But the city, the city planning commission has given them permission to use that as an office building, as a medical facility. Um, I think they're very generous on that.
Bill, we didn't. We, we just voted to make a recommendation to council.
On June ninth, on June ninth, the planning commission gave approved the use of the building for office space.
We, we couldn't.
Yes, we did, Brian. We, they came, they came to plan a commission. About a conditional use. I, I'm, are using that as a law office and planning commission gave them our blessing. And then they came back with the zoning change later.
I had the minutes of that meeting. I wasn't able to find the minutes for the September meeting, but I was able to find the minutes for the June meeting.
Okay.
People that are trying to buy it came back and asked for the C two or the C four?
Yeah, that's why I, I thought it was all in one shot, but maybe not.
Sorry Lance, we still haven't heard from you. Do you know if they have bought it for sure?
It's contentious.
Contingent.
On this.
Yes, it's contingent.
Sorry, I, you did say that.
Is there, um, anyone else from the public wanting to address council?
What is the value of the property?
I don't know that.
Um, I had that earlier, but it's, uh, it's about half of what it was in, uh. Ninety something or other when the hospital bought it. It's not, it's not worth as much now as it was. Was then, but they're still talking, uh, upward, I think of two hundred thousand dollars. Let me see here under. Let me see if I've got, if I can find the right spot here and I can read to you. The planning commission minutes. Okay, with the site plan for Harry Hoff master, Hoffmeister of Hoffmeister Realty at six twenty five Springfield Road. Hoffmeister stated that Attorney Thomas Rodfong is purchasing the property to use for office space. Willard stated the use is similar to the previous use. Jones moved to approve the site plan for six twenty five Springfield Road to continue to use the property as office space. Suter seconded the motion and on roll call, Blakeman yay, Souter yay, Jones yay, Banner yay, and Co. Yay. Motion passed.
It wasn't the same night that they requested the.
June, June, uh, no, that was you, you, the, the, the rezone. As my understanding was the September meeting, which your zoning office has not gotten published yet. So I was not able to find that. I, I was, I was having a difficult time trying to figure out what had happened here. Unfortunately, I was able to get. Get together with a couple of councilmen and, and get the, get the straight information. Uh, had I known about this, I mean, it's, I, I understand apparently with city zoning, with municipal zoning. You don't have to notify many adjacent property owners. As I understand it, you only have to notify the next adjacent. I really wish I had known about this before the planning commission meeting and I certainly would have spoken up then.
We, we are personally against it if it's going to be C two.
So he's, his biggest concern is his resale value? So you've already approved him to be in there and okayed that, so he could, he could continue forward and, uh, have his office. The office up there. He's just concerned about resale.
Let me make something clear. We do not absolutely positively know that his biggest concern is retail value. I'm now reading the non-conforming use sections. And there's a real question if he wants to change anything about the building, if he can even do that. I'm not saying that he does. Please do not think I'm, you know, stating, I know exactly what Mr. Wrongfong, Rodfong is going to do. I don't, but what I can say is the non-conforming use statute. Or ordinance certainly limits what he is able to do. What planning commission in effect approved was the use of this building as a non-conforming use. Call it what you want, look at the minutes any way you want to, but that's in essence what they've done. So the prospective buyer came back and said. Could we consider a zone change? Not necessarily telling anyone, to my knowledge, that he was just looking at this for resale value. But for any other type of reasons, such as maybe making a change to the building. Um, I don't know if Attorney Rodfong intends to use the entire building, possibly. He may or may not. I don't know. I don't know all of the details, but I know what planning commission effectively did. Was granted the idea of a non-conforming use. Mr. Rodfong isn't attorney. He's not a real estate attorney, but I'm guessing that he probably read. Our ordinance himself and concluded. If he wanted to do anything different at all, he may not even be able to. Again, I don't know that for certain, but all I'm doing is looking at what our says. So what brings us here today is the request that was made. For a change to the zoning ordinance, which basically means. The C two from an R one. And since this is the public hearing. There are requirements under our ordinance that certain property owners be notified. But the notice of this hearing be published so that anybody else presumably can hopefully find out about it.
Well, we are very concerned with, you know, our driveway is almost directly across from there, you know, of. Uh, we have grandchildren and it's a very quiet neighborhood and I know. Mr. Black had mentioned about like a dollar store or something. I doubt if a dollar store would go in there because we don't have a very high traffic area here. But that doesn't mean that a smaller business couldn't go in there that had more traffic or. You know, a flower shop or something.
Or a bar.
Yeah, I, so we do have concerns. Um. And I know, uh, Nathaniel was our next door neighbor and then we have. Uh, the alums that live beside us and they wanted to be on tonight, but his father passed away last night and they were not able to. Voice their opinion, but they were pretty much all in that same. I know, I don't know if George wants to say anything, but I think as far as us, you know, that, uh, are surrounding this area. I think we all feel like we're on the same page with how, um, you know, we feel about stuff. We're not against this office being over here. It's never been a problem. It's always been very quiet, not very heavily used. But if you put in a retail something over there, it's going to change that completely. But if you put in a retail something over there, it's going to change that completely.
Um, since I live on that street and I've been patiently listening to everyone speak, which I'm very happy about, I have to say that I concur with the neighbors on that street. If I understand it, I'm still a little bit confused. It seems like they could use it for the purpose as a law office. That would be permissible. I understand there's some concerns about non-conforming, but I will agree for two things. Number one, the street is becoming busier and busier and that intersection up there is a concern for all of us in this area. And, uh, that's one thing. And that item seven in C two is so flexible and there's so many different types of businesses that could go into that location if we go to a C two that I have major concerns about how that could change that neighborhood, especially with all those beautiful, uh, homes along the other side of the street, uh, that are well maintained. And, uh, so I share the concerns of, uh, the residents here.
Anyone else, um, wishing to address council?
Is there, I guess it's more of a, a question for Mark. Is there any way you could use the, the non-conforming, the way it is now? Uh, with a restriction or, or with a stipulation, I guess, that changes to the building, which, which don't affect the usage would be permissible?
Question. That's a good question.
I would think if you did, you're opening yourself up for anywhere else for that to happen though.
Thank you. Here's my concern. A non-conforming use, you're normally looking at one site by one site. The whole idea of a non-conforming use, and if you read the ordinance, you'll get the flavor of it. Non-conforming use oftentimes is a use that existed even prior to the enactment of a zoning ordinance. Um, so let's say you've got an area that at one time was industrial and it becomes residential, although the opposite happens, let's say that that's what you've got. This industrial or this commercial use has existed and it existed prior to the zoning ordinance. So you allow it to continue. But if that use wants to change in any way, expand in any way, then you've got a problem. Now, if it needs repaired, let's say there's a fire, you can allow it to be rebuilt, but no bigger than it was. So, you know, the idea of a non-conforming use is it's a use that doesn't fit in the area, but it's being allowed. So can you put restrictions? I suppose you could, but then you might open the door to, okay, the next time somebody has a non-conforming use, well, why don't you let me do this with it? Um, because I promise I won't make any changes. Other concern I have is I'm not sure that we can put restrictions on the non-conforming use. The ordinance actually puts the restrictions on the non-conforming use already. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
The size of that lot, I can't imagine somebody wanting to build on too much to make that much bigger than it already is.
Uh, is there any, anyone else in the, in the meeting that hasn't had an opportunity to speak up yet with, to council?
I think George is trying to talk.
Mr. Heinemann? I think you're, it doesn't show that you're muted, but we can't hear you.
Hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I live right next door to the six twenty five Springfield Road property. Lived here since before they built that prop or built that building. I would love to see it stay residential. I do not want anything in there commercial. Offices, not an issue. They're in here during the day, they're gone by five o'clock. It's still nice and quiet. As for them having the ability to change or to add on or redo whatever to the building, that would be up to you guys. You should be able to allow them to repair their building if needed. But as to change it to a commercial property, I don't want to see that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, um, is there anyone else? If there's not, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
I have roll call.
Liston?
Yes.
Dutilio?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
All right. And I, I think in fairness to everybody that's, uh, sat through this, rather than immediately go uh, into the second public hearing and then go back to action. I think we should just take action right now. Um, and be done with this portion of it. So, um, I would like someone to make a, a motion. Um, and just so everyone understands, the, the motion would be in an affirmative for the zone change. Um, that doesn't mean that you are, that's just a motion to put it out and then you would vote no if you're against it.
I'm moving. I'm wishing to, uh, approve the planning commission's recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second, I don't know.
Well, what you're voting on, I believe, is ordinance number twenty oh, twenty fifty. If that's the case, then you would need a motion to read it by title only first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I thought we were doing it on the action there. Um, yeah, I do, I need a motion to read ordinance twenty dash zero dash twenty fifty, uh, by title only.
So moved.
Second.
A roll call?
Dutilio?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
All right. Ordinance number twenty dash O dash twenty fifty. Uh, an ordinance amending the Columbia City zoning ordinance thereby rezoning track number one containing point zero six eight acres and track note, track two containing point six six acres of land from R one residential low density to C two office and limited business zoning district.
So moved.
Second.
So this would be, uh, a no if you're against it.
Uh, council discussion first, I think.
Yep.
Uh, having, listening to things and looking through the, uh, planning ordinances as we were sitting here doing this on the computer. It appears to me that it falls under, uh, I'll find it here. A, a section where, uh, it talks about the, uh, abandonment of a continuous use and it meets all the requirements, including, uh, that has been replaced by a, uh, another use under permit by the planning commission. So in that section, uh, twelve ninety six point ten abandonment, non-conforming uses. Uh, so it seems to me that the, uh, current situation where it's been approved for a new non-conforming use would allow the, the offices to be there without changing the, uh, zoning. And I do have a concern uh, with the idea that we would be approving potentially uh, all sorts of other commercial kinds of activity for that particular piece of property. So that, that's just my opinion, and I think that it's, uh, reasonable to approve the non-conforming use of an office building, but not necessarily to go the full route to approving commercial property.
Any other comments from council?
Um, I, I'd just like to add that we do have a lot of precedent for allowing continued non-conforming uses, but I'm not aware of a whole lot of precedent for a zoning change like this, especially, you know, a single city lot. Um, that would, I mean, frankly, it was built illegally, it was expanded illegally, it has an illegal parking lot. But I, I would believe that it'd be make more sense to treat it as something that was built in nineteen seventy and allow the continued non-conforming use rather than changing the zoning, just because I don't think that's something that we generally do.
Oh, we, we don't. That's why we did it this way.
Right. And by the way, I, I really appreciate what planning commission did because, um, you know, changing it from the C four to C two was about the only way to make it, make it fit by changing zoning. Um, I just, I agree with the, the property owners around them that it would, it does, that zoning change just does present future issues. And just beyond that, um, that I, I think there's plenty of precedent to say, continue using it the way it's being used, uh, without making a zoning change.
Well, if it just stays, if, if it's, if this is voted down, it will, it will stay as non-conforming use and it can be used as office space. That will stay that way.
Right. Well, there should be a, a new certificate of non-conforming use because the original non-conforming use has been abandoned and planning mission or the, I guess it's the building inspector issues a new certificate of, uh, non-conforming use.
I believe our intent as a planning commission was trying to make a commercial business fit in a commercial district, because it, it's been a commercial business. How it ended up there, none of us knew. But I think our intent was to try and fit it in a commercial district that, so, so it conformed.
So I completely understand. I just, my point is that we do, we do have other properties in town that are, that have non-conforming uses. I can think of one off the top of my head that are, that has, have changed even since I've lived here from one non-conforming use to another, but that were fit the same general characteristics. So that, that precedent exists. I just don't think there's a precedent for changing zoning to make the, the zoning fit. And I don't think I, it's a, I don't think it's a precedent that I want to establish.
There, there are precedents though, I believe of changing zoning, uh, when it's contiguous with other, the zoning next to it. But usually there's, you know, some restrictions and discussions on that as well.
I, I think those are mostly though, before the, the land is actually developed, the, the ones that I've seen, I mean.
That's, yeah.
Yeah, I can think of, of examples like that, but not examples where you take a, a non-conforming and change the zoning to make it conforming. I don't, I don't recall ever having seen that done in, in my years here, my few years here, but still.
Is there, um, more council discussion?
I'll call for the vote.
Roll call please.
Noel?
No.
Becker?
No.
Souter?
No.
McBane?
No.
Liston?
No.
Hilleo?
No.
Okay, for the record, that fails first reading, it will be on the agenda at the next city council meeting on second reading.
Very good. Thank you for your input, everyone.
Yes, thank you.
Thank, thank you and thanks, thank you for the neighbors.
All right. Next up, I need a motion to go into a public hearing regarding vacating a portion of Mary Alley and Long Alley.
So move.
Second.
Have roll call?
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Dutilio?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
All right. Is there anyone, uh, in the, the meeting here this evening that would like to address council regarding, uh, vacating a portion of Mary Alley and Long Alley? If so, please, uh, unmute your microphone. Go ahead, Neil.
Hi, um, yeah, I had received a letter about this meeting and I just guess, I'm just wondering exactly what the plan was, was my first hearing of that. So I know it's, is it behind, between, you know, where Oak Street, I guess it was at one point? That alley that went from Quincy to Blueberry. I'm not sure exactly where it is. I'm just wondering how it affects our property. We are, you know, and I, I assume it's Tucker Co. Building, uh, complex behind there is the word I've heard on the, in the hood. But, um, just wondering, you know, a couple of things just came to the meeting to get some information on that.
Sure.
Ms. Crawford, could you let us know where you live, your address, please?
Well, it's, uh, two two four Quincy Avenue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mark, do you have the, uh, or Lance, either one of you have the information for the, the lots that are touching it?
I do. It'll take me a second to pull it up. Hold on.
I guess just one other concern that I had with the whole, um, addition of the complex going there. Um, we have been working on that property for the last year. Uh, cause we had a situation there. Um, and I noticed that there is an odor like a sewer or odor. Um, daily I can, you know, within, it comes within the air. Is there, um, a sewer issue in that side of town? Um, and it, will this building of these homes add to that issue if there is one?
Can you answer that Lance?
I would, I mean, this is going to be extending basically, uh, Blueberry, uh, about three hundred feet or so. And there will be, um, five buildings down in there. Uh, there are two paper alleys, uh, the one, um, which is, runs parallel between, uh, Quincy and Blueberry. Um, and then there's another one on the, on the north side of Blueberry. That that runs behind the properties. Um, if, if you're experiencing sewer odors, we can come out there and look at, I mean, we have experienced, uh, sewer odors in Quincy uh, in, in the past, but I don't believe that this development is going to, um, affect uh, any sewer odors that would be coming from your area, uh, because they are on separate sewer lines, uh, completely.
Thank you.
Hey Lance, am I correct that we wouldn't actually be abandoning that portion of Long Alley behind, behind her house? Cause I think that's, that portion is actually being used.
No, so the, the Long Alley runs, uh, east and west.
Right.
And, and I'm not sure that, um, you know, I, I'm not sure what alley. I, I think they might be using a different alley.
Well, there's a, there's a driveway that runs up Oak Street and then cuts across behind, between the three sets of, of properties right there. Um, if you, I, I can grab it on Google Maps if you want. Um, but there is a driveway that, that's using it. I think it's being used by both sides of the alley.
There is a driveway there. I noticed that the, to the house behind, I think it's two, two, two Quincy. Uh, they use it as their driveway to get into their, on their property.
The driveway, I think it's actually on the Oak Street right away and then up Long Alley between those three, between the three sets of properties. We just want to make sure we're not abandoning something we shouldn't be.
So you're saying up, up, are you saying? So you're saying up, up, are you saying east?
I'm just not sure where the alleys are. I can't find a map with them on.
Kevin, do you have a map?
I'll, I'll be pulling it up in a couple of seconds.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess in my forty. Let's say forty plus years in Columbia, I never have heard of those alleys in that area. So.
I actually have it. I can share my screen.
Okay. Thank you.
No, I can't.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna do it here. Um, I'll be there.
Okay. Technology, gotta love it.
You know, because I'm not even trying.
I'm setting on my hands.
Lance, we need Jennifer to do something?
No.
I'm here if you need me.
I need everybody to stare at me and really, really put the pressure on me.
We are, and the time is ticking.
Yes.
Go Lance, go Lance, go Lance.
Right.
Or we could call him Lance-a-lot.
Right.
I don't think he's seen that yet, so.
We need that Jeopardy music.
It's more like the Hollywood squares, let's face it.
We, we do look like the Hollywood squares these days. Rick and Kevin are in the middle. You're the center squares. At least on my screen.
My screen too. Interesting. They're all over the place.
Yeah, it depends on what kind of device you use. Amazing what we've learned over the last few months, isn't it?
It really is.
Things we never thought we'd have to know.
Okay, she just disabled it. You saw it, right?
Me?
No, 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 Jen.
Okay. Disabled at one place, but then I must have forgotten or didn't know I needed to disable the other. So.
Okay.
Do it now.
All right, Jen, let's try it again.
You're disabled in both.
We need to enable screen saving. Or screen sharing.
Okay, it says allow participants to share screen and. One participant can share at a time. All, I'm just going to change everything to all participants. Nobody do anything weird and share because then I'll. Amber will say I wasn't supposed to do that.
We won't throw you under the bus.
Thanks. I appreciate that. Ah, there it is.
Okay, do you see a cursor moving?
Yep.
I do.
Yes.
Good. So this is Blueberry here. And this is Wallula Alley, which is already vacated. I believe that, uh, Ms. Crawford, the, the property that you're talking about, a portion of Long Alley has already been. Vacated or back in here. And then Quincy would be. Out here. So as you come down across Oak Alley. You know, there, there's basically a, a guardrail there now in this area. And these are one of the only, you know, few alleys that have not been permanently been vacated. You can see. This one here has already been vacated and this one's also been vacated. There is a property in a home, that person might be on this. You know, on this call, I'm not sure. Let's see, hold on one second here. I'm gonna look for the tax map here.
It's on your screen right now, Lance.
So. Here's Blueberry, here's Oak Street, here's Quincy. And then there's Long Alley, uh, right back here.
Okay.
I'm looking for your alley.
Yeah, she, she lives right next to Oak Street, Lance.
Okay. So the portion that we're going to vacate is, is clear down here where Pittsburgh is. It does not, we're not going to vacate the portion, uh, behind that. I'm trying to. Let's see here.
So we're going to vacate the portion behind the four Pittsburgh Street LLC lots.
Correct, right here. One, two, three, four.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so it doesn't touch my property? That.
It does not look like it.
Okay.
And then on the other, on the other side, there's Mary Alley here. And that is behind the, uh. Pittsburgh Street LLC. And then the, the road's going to come down here to, you know, make a cul-de-sac and then. You know, go back to. This layout here.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And the, these alleys are not going to be opened up. I know I got a call from somebody on Quincy. A couple of months ago and. You know, they're, they're, we're vacating them. So, you know, there's not going to be through traffic back through here.
Okay. 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 Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would? Like to address counsel this evening? Going once? Twice? Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I think you have a raised hand.
Oh, I couldn't see it.
Unless it's not meant to be a raised hand. Sometimes people click on it. Mr. Kenyon has his hand raised.
Hello, sorry about that. Um, I'm the designer on this property here. I was just want, I was gonna help Lance out if he needed it. I didn't know if he had a draw, drawing in front of him. That's why I raised my hand. He needed any help explaining it. But that is, that property that's next to Long Alley. There is a house there with a driveway that goes back. We won't be touching any of that. I just wanted to clarify that that house is closer to the Oak Street, uh, right away. So that property I think owns three different plots, if I remember right. So, but that house is set closer to the Oak Street alleyway as well. So I just wanted to let you guys and inform you guys on that.
Thank you.
Yep. That's a, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address counsel? If not, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
We already had that motion, didn't we? Motion and second?
I don't think we, I think we stopped because, uh, we went back to Kevin.
So move.
Second.
I have roll call.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
DeTilio?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Becker? You're on mute, Dan.
Thanks, Dan. Answer yes.
Thank you.
All right, and, uh, for the, the sake of time, um, I'm going to do the same thing. I want to be fair. They've sat through two, two public hearings. Um, and I don't want them to have to sit through a presentation from Rob and then Lance. So I'm going to, uh, call. I've already got the approval for me to read by title only, so I'm going to read ordinance, um, number.
Actually, Brian, you asked for permission for just one ordinance at that point in time.
Well, I'm sorry. I thought I asked for, um, to read them by title only, but I, can I have a motion to, to read any remaining items by title only?
So moved.
Have roll call.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
DeTilio?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Right, ordinance number twenty dash O dash twenty fifty-one, first reading, an ordinance vacating a portion of Mary Alley and Long Alley.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? Have roll call, please.
Liston?
Yes.
Tilio?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Very good. Pass his first reading. Uh, thank you again for the public comments. And, uh, at, at this point, we will, uh. Go back to Rob Struharic, uh, here to present a project at Lakefront Golf Course.
And could everybody mute there themselves? But Rob.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Uh, thanks for sticking around. I'm, I'm worn out after all that conversation, but, uh. Next week, Brian, if I have two minutes, I might try to get the meeting in those two minutes and, uh. Just rush it. No, but seriously, thank you for sticking around. Um. Today, uh, I think it'd be nice to go through some slides and reacquaint everybody with the Lakefront Project. We have Alan Winger here with us today, Attorney Alan Winger, uh, who's representing, uh, Master Plan Builders and APL Properties. And, um, here by myself, but we have, uh, two other partners, Bob Scherherrick and Paul Scherherrick are my two other partners, my father and my uncle. Um, and for those of you that don't know Master Plan Builders, uh, we are a local builder in Columbia. I personally live, uh, behind Arrowhead Lake. We are the developers for the remaining property around Arrowhead Lake and Old Sabra. And we've been living in the community. There's, uh, a number of employees that live in the community as well. And we have, um, been, uh, developing and putting in streets here since about two thousand and six. So. Without further ado, I want to just reacquaint everybody with the Lakefront Golf Course and I'm going to kind of go through it fairly quickly. And then stop and, and everybody's been, been on a computer for some time. So I'm going to try to get through it in a. In five or 10 minutes and then stop and then answer any questions about whether we have to, how we have to pay for things or, uh, certain procedural aspects. Um, so. My start with some slides here. Lakefront Golf Course is, um. It is, Adam Q. Zoom in, please. Lakefront Golf Course here is fifty-five acres of C four zone property. Um, it was owned C four, um, roughly over, gosh, it's probably been over ten years now. It is the old Lakefront Golf Course, uh, just east, I'm sorry, just west of Arrowhead Lake. And it was originally a part of three golf course. Um, and it's behind, uh, the Sparkle Market. It is located between State Route forty-six and State Route one sixty-four, just north of Route fourteen. We'd like to transform this fifty-five acre golf course into a mixed commercial residential community. Kind of the cool thing is, is that we have the opportunity, if done right and if, if thought through carefully. To have about a third of the property as commercial space, a third is residential and a third as open space or green space. The property is absolutely beautiful and we think that, uh, maintaining about a third of the property's open space, um, will. Will allow the residences to be nestled into the open environment and take advantage of the scenic views. Also, it gives a commercial space around it as we know, Columbia, um, with, um. Just as we mentioned, the last, uh, the first rezoning, uh, application for C two. To have a C four property already zone C four, and we are actually going to be asking to rezone portions of it to, to, to residential back to R three. In this particular instance, it's in a unique situation where we're actually reversing back to residential. And the residences know prior to moving into this complex that there's commercial around them. We feel as master plan builders that we need to. Have control of the architectural aesthetics of the commercial, uh, environment. There will be a master HOA for all of the commercial space, including the residential space, so that. As property changes occupants or even possibly changes hands, um, there will be an architecture review committee. Maintaining the, the aesthetics of these fifty-five acres. So again, we'd like to line Bay Shore Avenue up with an entrance here, uh, which will be our main entrance and it'll have a secondary entrance to State Route forty-six. The property has its challenges. One of them is the earthwork, a tremendous amount of earthwork that's going to go into, uh, this parcel. Mainly for the commercial space is a tremendous amount of earthwork to get these pads ready and also with, uh, the residences. The, uh. The excavation, the streets, the compacting of, uh, of, uh, the building sites. Sanitary sewer having to run around behind the homes versus along the street lines, a lot of, lot of, uh. Areas and obstacles that we feel that we could overcome. Due to the significant nature of the infrastructure cost and earthwork, um, it's only viable for us to purchase the property and develop it as. As a mixed use and the TIF allows us to have a vehicle in place to reduce our costs for, uh, developing. For those of you that don't know, uh, TIF is a tax increment financing, it's a public method that is used to subsidize some of the redevelopment cost for infrastructure. Uh, and other community improvement projects that a city or, or a community, uh, may desire. The TIF in this aspect, initially we asked for twenty years and. The thought process here is there's a lot of uncertainties. There's, there, there's our, the uncertainties that we all know that we have personally are going through. The anxieties we have resulting with the pandemic, um, the political anxieties, et cetera. Um, and we feel that. Our business, it's only viable and we're only comfortable going at this now with a twenty-five year, uh, TIF. And we increased it five years because it just doesn't make sense financially, um, with these uncertainties in place. We feel that, you know, every project we want to be a part of needs to be a success. We have not been a part of a failed project. We go back to. You know, projects like the Laurel's and Boardman, Park Harbor, the Heathers, Covington Creek, um, projects that we've, we've. Started and completed and we are on a mission to complete every project we start. My father's been a business since eighty-three. Um, this is, we're going on geez, uh, forty years soon. I've been in the business since two thousand and one. Just to give you a, an idea. We, you know, we put roots in Columbia. We started in Kefal, Boardman, Poland. We've completed a lot of those projects, but. In Columbia alone, we have completed over forty million dollars of residential homes. From an assessed property tax value. So that's actually quite a bit more than that, but that's we, what we've completed since we've been here. So we've added a tremendous amount to the tax base. Not including, uh, um, what, and I, and I kind of quantify that for the school system from property taxes. Um, and also from an income tax standpoint. But the TIF, going back to this TIF here, we are asking for twenty-five years because we feel that twenty-five years is going to set us up for success. Okay, we, we can't see us entering a project that, that, uh, that's questionable. In doing so, the most important aspect of this project is a sanitary lift station. The sanitary lift station is, is vital for growth in town to the north. Uh, we all know the, the, the benefits and the need for. The infrastructure in town, without going into any additional detail. We all know that the, a North Coast Station, the benefits that it will be able to bring to, uh, the city of Columbia. The lift station will be in the lowest, uh, area, uh, of the Lakefront Golf Course, which will provide additional growth for Long State Route forty-six. This will actually provide growth all the way down to the west, uh, on State Route fourteen. Lance, and, and I'm sure the city engineers could expand on that as well. In doing so, um, just as. In doing so, just as we comment on lift station, lift station will, or we feel that the lift station will benefit, or since it's benefiting the entire town, we will contribute as much as anybody else is going to be contributing to the, the lift station. However, we feel that this portion will not be part of the TIF. This will have to be funded through the city's own budget. And I have outlined a number of new revenue streams that are going to be coming from this project. And there's additional commitments that we will make to make sure that this lift station will be serviced, the debt port will be serviced. And we can get into those weeds during conversation after the initial presentation here. So the station again is going to be, you know, to the northwest of the property along the creek there and a low-lying floodplain area. In, as explained before, not too many properties are zone C four. This is a C four fifty-five acre parcel, probably one of the most valuable acres in town if it had sanitary sewer and water. However, through the, the, in Mahoney County and around the Mahoney Valley, a lot of commercial spaces, you know, in comparison to the Pittsburgh and Columbus markets, don't spend the traditional amount of money commercial spaces spend in Pittsburgh with earthwork. This has its challenges here in the Mahoney Valley, because most of our properties are flat. So in, with that said, the majority of the property, we'd like to leave as C four. Okay, however, we can't build residential homes on C four property. So we would need to change this area here to C three. And we would do that after we jump through the hoops of a TIF, and we know the sanitary lift station is going to be set in stone, and, and we have a kind of schedule as far as when that's going to be coming. So with the R three zoning, I would like some feedback, but I don't think it's gonna be the issue changing from C four to R three, because in my mind, it's kind of going backwards. And I feel that I don't think there's an avenue that we could keep at C four and do any type of conditional zoning. So that would eventually be changed prior to developing it. The only budding property owner here is the original owner that lives in the house that was originally part of this parcel. Some of the home styles, just as an example, I encourage any, anybody from town, for that matter, and anybody interested in a home, obviously, to drive through the Back Bay to Arrowhead. We bought ninety-three acres, and we have kind of muscled through that community. We just put in Back Bay Drive. Our average sale price on lots are sixty, seventy, eighty thousand dollars for lots back there. Actually, just put the final quote of Blacktop on it two weeks ago. So it's a gorgeous community. These are some of the sample homes that are along Windjammer right now. We don't know exactly what the aesthetic's gonna be in the new Lakefront, the new Lakefront's residential neighborhood. However, it will be aesthetically pleasing. One thing is for certain, we're gonna build properties to last, because we live in these communities as well, and we don't want to obviously have a diminished name as the developer. Some of the interiors, you know, this will probably be a standard interior, granite countertops, painted cabinets right now are, we don't do anything below this. So this would probably be where we would start as our base. It's some of the upgrade interiors you'll see here in our cottages that we have around the Back Bay to Arrowhead. We take cabinets all the way up to the nine-foot ceiling, glass cabinetry, changed level granite, et cetera. But they will be high-quality homes. This is an actual shot of the scenic area here in the low-lying areas of the Lakefront Golf Course. As you can see, this was shot last year during last winter. There's been quite a bit of growth since, since then. However, these ponds here, there's a bridge halfway through the middle pond. It's a very, very scenic area, and we feel that maintaining wetlands, being good stewards of the environment, and also providing an area, whether it be hike and bike trails or walking areas for residences and residents and other members of the community to enjoy is very valuable. So there will be in our plan, a hike and bike trail, and there will be access points along the dedicated streets for not just our residences, but our residents, but for all of Columbian residents to, to, to enjoy. A third of the property. So there's gonna be eighteen acres here that we are setting aside for views and for green space. That's a very significant amount of C four property to set aside. So, which is exactly half of the, the C four property we're maintaining. So about, about eighteen acres for commercial, eighteen acres for open space, and then there'll be eighteen acres for, for residential. I think I'm gonna stop here and then back up, and we could go through any of these other slides and answer any questions you have. And I'm sure there's, there's plenty of discussion. So if we could open the mic back up to the council members, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rob. Anyone have any questions at this point for Rob?
Yeah, Rob. Are you planning? Are you planning to, to, to build these homes? Like, I'll, I'll use the word speculation. And you'll build them and then sell the homes? Or are you just gonna sell the lots and then build the homes after the lots are bought?
Well, it's entirely up to sort of the business model after we leave the school board. So just depending on, there's a couple, couple of things that we'll need to discuss the school board, depending on students and, and what they're expecting. But as of right now, I would say that these are gonna be roughly two hundred thousand dollar villas that we'll probably own and maintain. And probably, to be honest with you, lease out for two to three-year minimum leases. The trend in the national market is single-family homes that you can lease for long term. So that may be a significant portion of the project. If, if we veer from that, they are gonna be just like the single-family lots around the Back Bay, where we will probably maintain the exterior look of the property, but sell the land under fee simple. So, and it just goes back to a little bit how we're going to address the, the needs here from the TIF and also from the school board to get, to navigate through those waters.
What's gonna be the average size of the home?
The average size is probably gonna be between fifteen hundred and two thousand square feet. So there's kind of a sweet spot of about seventeen hundred square feet that we're, you know, realizing. Some people take it up to twenty-two hundred square feet, but seventeen, eighteen hundred square feet is our sweet spot right now.
And there'll, there'll be basements in there?
Yes, actually. Let's, let me change slides here. All the homes from here all the way around, okay, to here, will have lockout basements, and they'll all be finished basements. So an initial, initial home plans. So the homes actually are gonna be done quite a bit different than the traditional home plan. We are going to, since you're having finished basement space and recreational space in the basements, every home will have a two-car garage, attached to car garage, you know, they're, they're gonna be nice. So, and if we continue to own them and lease them out, you'll see, you know, even with the homes in Back Bay, we have all concrete driveways and, you know, I mean, we're not going to, the homes in Back Bay do not have basements, but all of these homes will. So.
Do you have any? You may not be willing to say this, but you have, I'll make this a yes or no question. Do you have any people or any merchants that are willing to sign up for your commercial area?
We have, we've talked to quite a few people. It boils down to when we're gonna start, and there's some uncertainty with the election here. So obviously, we're, we're, we're a month away. Nobody's gonna pull any triggers prior to the election. Excuse, but it's definitely been an uncertain year. So we kind of got through the uncertainty of COVID, and then we're, we're back, you know, we're up against the election right now. So I'm the TIF that I presented to Mark Hudson and Lance here, the agreement, took the responsibility away from the city entirely. So one of the key, skip one of the key things here with the conversations we had actually a year ago, it was back to last October, November, was that the city did not want to be on the hook for, for any cost that was that was resulting from the pilot not being paid for through, you know, through the service payments. So I've established that, you know, now I could probably go into a little more detail here than I can. But I've, I've, I've taken the personal responsibility on saying, we will fund this ourselves, and we won't use any mechanism through the city for funding for the TIF. So if we do not have hypothetically, we do say we do not have a drugstore moving in to one of these commercial parcels, or we do not have an office complex moving into a commercial parcel, the city's not on the hook for whatsoever. So we are taking that risk. Kind of the one reason is because the city decided not to be liable or take any risk with us. We thought that the additional five years was, provided us some additional insurance of stepping in and taking that personal. And I don't know, what would it be called? It would be risk. Let me, I'll talk a little bit about it for a second.
Rather than the TIF being a vehicle for the city to sell bonds and come up with money upfront to pay for the infrastructure, and then have the service payments or the tax revenues that come from the property go back to pay off those bonds, the vehicle that is proposed here would have the developer paying all that upfront cost. And the taxes, as they are paid over the twenty-five years, the service payments, you call those taxes, would come back to reimburse the developer. If the service payments in the form of the development agreement that we've been reviewing with, with Mark Hudson are insufficient to cover the debt service, the risk would be on the developer. The city would have no obligation or liability. If the service payments exceed the debt service, the excess would remain with the city in an escrow fund for the years when perhaps the service payments would not be enough to pay. And so it's a vehicle that's clearly allowed in the TIF statute that would allow the deferred tax payment to come back to reimburse the developer rather than to pay the city's obligation under bonds.
Dude, does anyone have any estimate to the, what the cost of the TIF would be? I mean, to, to develop that portion of it?
Yeah, at this point, Brian, I do. But it is, I won't say a moot point, but it is, is basically, you know, it's our risk that, that, you know, the, the the TIF itself is going to pay for any costs associated with the commercial, including possible remediation or, you know, storm sewers and retention areas. I'm gonna pull up one little cost here that I have.
I guess all, where, where I'm going, Rob, and I, I don't think it would happen. I'm only asking the question so that I know worst-case scenario, because I lived through Firestone Farms and not making the, the debt service for several years to the two to four hundred grand a year. So I, I was more looking at, like Alan suggested, that those years when you bring in extra, it would sit in escrow. I'm only wondering what that might look like, what the risk would be if it's not sitting in escrow and something catastrophic happens four years from now with COVID, no one does anything, you're no longer in the picture. And even though you took on the, the risk, at the end of the day, if there's no one there, the, the city's still got a bill coming in, right?
No. Those are, those bills are taken care of by me, by our family personally, here at Master Plan.
Okay, that's, that's all, the only reason I was asking.
No, it's, I mean, Alan, I mean, I mean, basically, whether we write a check or whether it's finance or however, it's, it's, you know, however, we, we end up there, it is going to be us personally. So, I mean, it, it's obviously gonna be, you know, I'm just getting, you know, it would just be a, a, a shot in the dark. And I have my estimates, but I hate to share numbers because they're not.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't care about the number as much as the, what the, the risk was, was like, if for some reason you were no longer in the picture.
Yeah, so if we're no longer in the picture, well, we're going to be in the picture first of all. But if we're in, the city's not liable. That means the property's paid for through, I don't know, my, my personally, or be paid through a financing mechanism. But
the, the TIF funds or the, the service payments are based upon the enhancement of the tax revenues from the property, from the improvements. And if the improvements don't happen, there won't be the tax revenues. And there would be no money coming back to the developer. If the developer went completely belly up, the city would have no obligation, would not affect the city's bonds or anything of the sort, because it's all privately financed.
Okay.
The TIF aspect of it is that
we're repaying the developer.
Yes, the, the service payments could come back to the developer to fund those TIF improvements over the twenty-five years.
Yeah, and your, your, your questions, your questions, Brian, are actually, actually where we started this. So last October, November, we were trying to reduce the risk to the city because, you know, because everybody's lived through what happened on fourteen, and we want to reduce those risks. We thought that it wasn't viable. There was just, there were just, there was so many safeguards each of us were putting in place for each other. And it was like, you know, enough's enough. We'll just assume the risk. And the city assumed certain risks. We, we basically pulled all, anything with the TIF, regardless, any risk regarding the TIF away from it. The only, the only thing that the city is gonna be on board for is the list station. And the list station basically is, is the risk that I, I think there's actually two separate things we need to, to really, I don't vote on essentially. One is the approval of a lift station, and the safeguards that may as the developers' master plan APL is going to personally put in place for the city to make sure that it gets off the ground properly. And so I think that's one conversation. And we can go into kind of, you know, we could touch base on, on the different income streams that we're gonna provide to get the list station off the ground. And then, and then the second conversation is the TIF. And for us, they go hand in hand, but really, they're, they're, they're financed completely separate, two separate conversations. The TIF itself, though, is basically us acknowledging that the roadways, storm light, you know, storm lines, street lights, whatever it takes to get this off the ground. Mainly, we're getting, we're getting involved with earthwork. And to be honest, it's a very expensive piece of property to have a third of it going to wetlands and the floodplains and a green space and a third of it going to residential. And then really, a lot of the cost is coming in under commercial. So for Columbian, I think it's a little bit expensive on the, on the commercial side. When it's all, when you break it down by the price of, you know, what green space should be, the price of residential should be, because I'm paying for residential on the other side of town, off of Eureka Road. And then, you know, what the price of commercial is per acre. So when you break it all down, then you have to have earthwork. It's an expensive piece of property. However, I think, and I think a lot of people that are in town know that this is a key for steady and, for steady growth for the future of, of the town that we live in. Yeah, so I think that, that's, that's the key here is that if I don't want the property, I would be standing up in front of you and wasting the last two years, you know, discussing it. We want to build on it. We would love to own it. We would love to, to, to make sure that a lot of the property we have in town is secured by having something that is, is being an asset to, to our west side of town. So, but, um, I mean, I don't know if there's any questions regarding the TIF, or we could kind of touch base on some of the revenue streams with the lift station, because I know that's gonna be one of the, the components here that if we don't have, if we not have a lift station, we, we, you know, ultimately, we have to walk away. So the lift station is really what we need to discuss, I guess.
I wanted to ask about that, because I know Lance, when you gave me my tour last year, you told me that part of the kind of overall plan of that was that that lift station would replace, eventually replace several of the ones that are on that side of town. Which is great. What, what kind of cost are we looking at for that? Just, just the initial installation? I know there's more beyond that, but you're, you're muted, Lance. You're muted.
Lance, you want to handle that question?
Yeah, I'm gonna attempt to. I don't have those numbers right in, right in front of me, but you're probably talking between the water and the sewer, probably one point two million, I believe, give or take. You know, between both of those.
That initial, and there will be further costs to replace the other lift stations or would that be planned to all happen at once?
That initial plan would take the first one out. In, in order that lift station to work, the one lift station would be eliminated immediately.
Okay. All right. So significant change.
Yes. I think though, there's a significant charge. I think that's probably on the light side too. I'd be back in a sec.
Yeah, and in comparison, the Firestone Farms was about nine million.
I was just curious.
Yeah, no, I just want to get from trying to paint the picture proportional.
Yeah, and I, and I kind of want to just, just back of one second, we talked about the lift station because it kind of goes hand in hand with what I'm going to say next. Is that, yeah, I think that's a little bit like, I think some of the conversations were one point two, one point three, one point four in that, in that neighborhood. But the lift station itself, you know, so just again, put in perspective. We're talking about fifteen million dollars in new homes here. Okay, we're talking about possibly ten million dollars of commercial space. The fifteen million dollars in new homes seems like, you know, it's this mountain, you know, the mountain of real estate that we need to climb. But truth be, you know, since we've, we've already built, you know, north forty, fifty million dollars worth of homes in town that from an assessed value, that's about a third of what we built to date. So I think it's, it's, it's a very, very doable. I think that it's a, it's a good fit for us. It's the scope of the project's not too big. It's not too small. It's just right in our wheelhouse. So going back to what I'm proposing next is the, the income strategy, how to pay for the lift station and how to service that debt. And I think there's, there's really four, four points to make here. And I, again, I mean, we could go a little bit into the paperwork, but one thing that we are proposing is that if you have a lift station, we're proposing that we guarantee the city five years of payments of sixty-five thousand dollars. Okay, and the average sewer cost, or the, sorry, the average permitting cost per, per building here is about four thousand dollars per building. Okay? And we feel that we could build fifteen units, twenty units a year. With that said, we are guaranteeing the city every year in our agreement, sixty-five, sixty-five thousand dollar payments put towards our permitting cost, whether we build the units or not. Okay, in my estimation, and again, I don't know, you know, this is up to the city to decide, but my estimation, it's going to cost fifty or sixty thousand dollars of service. The, the cost associated with a listation. So if the city went out and received a loan or however you decided to pay for, pay cash for sixty-five thousand dollars in, in our calculations is the minimum payment we would pay the city for the first five years. Okay? And that kind of kicks the city off. Okay, you know, three hundred thousand dollars kicks the city in the right direction to help pay for that lift station. In addition to that, you know, we are not going to pay these permits without building homes. And we're not going to develop this property or buy the property if that matters without building. So eventually we're going to, we're going to put bodies in there. On probably a light forecast, we use some, we use an algorithm or an assumption that the school board, you know, the difference between what they collect in property taxes versus what they collect in income tax. So we use a calculation about fifty-seven percent of the assessed value for taxable as, as the average income in comparison to the property that they live in, in Colombia. So just averaging a household income of eighty thousand dollars with eighty-eight homes is what my initial plan proposes. Provides about seven million of annualized income or one percent of that is seventy thousand dollars in income tax per per year. So as five years expire for these initial payments, we hope to have all those units occupied and have about seventy thousand dollars a year coming into the city in income tax. Again, you know, it doesn't directly service that lift station, but it's providing additional income into the city. So we, we have these two revenue streams. We also have the revenue stream of the, the, the actual taxable land underneath these homes. So the, the vertical cost of the homes are non-taxable with the CRA. However, the land itself is still taxable. So that could possibly be just, just from a land standpoint, up to additional seventeen thousand dollars a year in revenue, which is about thirteen and a half percent on that side of town of, of the taxable cost regarding raw land. So right now the city's receiving thirteen, thirteen hundred dollars actually for that particular parcel per year. And we're trying to up that to seventeen thousand dollars in raw land. So now the, 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 the fourth mechanism is once the fifteen years for the CRA expires, then on my initial notes I wrote down here, I put them. Then the what did I set them? I set them down somewhere. Yeah, my computer. So after the fifteen years expire, I just ran some quick numbers. After the fifteen years expire, when we talk about vertical structure and property taxes, it jumps from, on the residences, it jumps from ten thousand from just the land up to forty-seven thousand with the land in the homes per year that the city would get at thirteen and a half percent, thirteen point four percent. And after twenty-five years after the TIF is totally exhausted, it goes to eighty-two thousand dollars a year. So you have these four different revenue streams that the city is going to be receiving by, by continuing to develop town. And I think first and foremost is, is, you know, putting our money where our mouth is and creating an agreement with the city that, that we're going to step in and say, listen, you know, we're going to kick this off and make sure that, that, you know, some of this debt service is covered. And then as, you know, we go through year one, year two, year three, there'll be an overlap here with income coming in that the city will receive with our tenants or our residents. So in these homes. So that does not count for any additional revenue, which is actually number five, that the commercial spaces will generate regarding income tax. So, or my, again, we have, the sixth prong is just building the homes themselves are going to generate with additional income tax. We're talking about fifteen million dollars of expenditures in town during the time period. So all these revenue sources, it just makes all the sense in the world to, to, to upgrade and, and strike while the iron's hot here, while the economy is good, housing is good, rates are low. We could add a lot more quality in, in our, in our homes at this point. So.
Very good. Any, any other comments or questions from council? Very nice presentation, Rob.
Thank you. Yeah, we hope, we hope that we could come back. I will say, I like to close and hopefully if any of you have questions, I mean, you're welcome to get ahold of me and we can sit down one-on-one and dive into these numbers further if we, if you like. One of the things that I will say is that we have we have a love for Colombia. And I think when we walk the streets and I, and I see a lot of you council members on the streets and stuff, we're able to talk and you know, we all share the same love for Colombia. So we're not an outside developer. We are, you know, my kids go to Columbia school system. We want what's best for the schools. We want what's best for town. With that said, I know the owners of the property are currently on the call right now. And, you know, we, you know, they were gracious enough to give us an extension on our purchase agreement to kind of get through the because I need to go through the school board to get through the, the summer season so that I could approach council again and then get back in front of the school system and school board. So I'd like to come back in two weeks from now. And so in between those, that two week period, I hope to give you some additional information and continue the conversations with Mr. Hudson and I'm Mr. Willard. And then if you have any questions, we could talk then, but we do sort of need to fast track this so that we can try to get some approvals done with the school board by the end of the year. So I'm kind of, you know, unfortunately, we're at the point now where we need to either make some decisions and move forward, or we need to turn the other way and let the, the, the owner re-list the property and put it back on the market. But I have every intention of, of seeing this through and that's why, why we're standing here today. So.
Thank you.
Rob, if it's at all possible, if you're ever going to be out there, if you could give me a call, I would love to tour that property with you.
All right, we'll put some boots on and go for a walk. Just give me a call tomorrow. We'll schedule it here. Pick action. It's going to be nice towards the end of this week. So rather do all the sunshine next Friday or Saturday, or this Friday or Saturday.
I'll give you a buzz.
Okay, thank you.
Hey Skip, if you think about it, give me, give me a call and maybe I can join you guys.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, guys. Have a good evening and thanks for listening to our presentation and I appreciate you hanging in there.
Next time, fifteen minutes, I'm giving you an hour.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have the manager's report.
Okay, so give you an update on the park. We've been doing the R and B's project. The Legacy Trail Loop project has started. If you've been in the park, it is absolutely crazy how, how much work they're getting done. Sports courts are looking really nice. Lots of, lots more sidewalks. We're really excited. And if you, if you remember, you know, we're, we're shooting for middle of December for an end date on that project. And if the weather, you know, keeps, you know, keeps fairing the way it did, you know, in, in early October, I think we'll, I don't, I think we'll be okay on that timeline. I did apply or in the process of applying for another ODOT TAP grant. And that's kind of phase two from the one that we just finished August fourth in, in the park. We won't know until next spring, but, you know, hopefully, hopefully we're able to get that. The LEAF program. You know, you all got your cards in the mail. I got a call Saturday night from Ace and said, hey, we're, we're out. So we had, we'd given them two pallets. They ordered two pallets for us. They gave out all two pallets. And, and we have some in storage that we're going to give away starting Monday from City Hall. But what a great problem to have, you know, that, that those two pallets were gone. So we went ahead and purchased part of the, of another pallet they had. So we ended up doing two pallets plus a hundred, hundred packs. So that the project is getting more successful every year. The charging station that we've been talking about is fully operational.
Do we know if we're like listed on their maps and stuff now?
Yeah, we're, we should be on there. Yes, we're, we're, we're on there. We're on their apps now. Actually, if you go down there, if you're walking by it, you can actually download the app and take a look at it. It's pretty user friendly and I don't have an electric car, but very user friendly, especially for somebody that has you know, has dealt with those before. Very nice interface on it. We are only a third, third of the way through the current R and B project. We've been working on another one coming up. More news to come in, in the next few weeks and perhaps the next council meeting, but it would be really neat to, to get another project done with all the other projects that we've got going on, including the pole in the phase, phase one of the Legacy Trail. We did get our, another installment of the CARES Act money. And you know, you've, you've heard a lot of this. We need to spend it by this summer thirty-first. We're working through the details of the program. It's, there's a lot there to deal with. We're looking into our needs and options and plan to come with you, to come to you in, in November to basically appropriate those, those funds and, and, you know, kind of go over broadly what, what we're going to use them for or what we have used them for. But you know, that November third is coming pretty quick. Two weeks, you know, that's two weeks from tonight. So we would like to have some legislation in your packets by the thirtieth. And in the money that we've gotten in, I, what I'd like to do, I'm, I'm asking council to I'm looking for a couple volunteers and maybe, I don't know how official you need to do this, but maybe put a committee together to help Mike and I, you know, focus on that CARES Act money. Because we just got an installment two Fridays ago, a pretty large one. So we, we really need to take a look at it and it was, it was, it was larger than the, the first two that we've gotten. So I think it would be good to get, get some council members in on the ground level of that. And, you know, we've kind of bring you up to speed. And so, you know, November third, it's, it's not so hard to explain to everybody and so I don't know how you want to do that, but you know, we can talk about it now if you'd like.
But you want to, we could make a motion to, how many members do you want on it?
It's up to you. I mean, I, I, I guess two or three. I think two or three would be good if we have, if we have two or three interested people.
What kind of time commitment are you looking at? How many, how many hours do you think you'd be looking at just time commitment wise?
I'd say we probably have, you know, one hour Zoom meeting, but it's going to, it takes a lot of reading. You know, the concept and the, the rules and regulations, you could probably read the document in twenty minutes, but you need to read it like five times, I think. So it, it, it's a lot to, again, it's a lot to take in.
I'd be willing to help out, Lance.
Okay.
I'd be.
I don't even think, do we need to make it anything formal?
Probably not.
Then you guys can just work on your own agenda and you don't have a quorum of council members. So you don't even have to publish a meeting or anything.
Yeah. Yep. Yeah, we, we've done, you know, similar projects, you know, in the past through a committee together to, you know, to, to help guide the process. Let's see, I'll move on. Managers reports, water department. We did apply for our new NPDDS permits. It's a five-year cycle. The generators that we've been working on for probably, I don't know, last eighteen months are in service. So that's, that's great. The, the distribution crew been spending time with the leak doctors and they're almost done with that project. That is a month-long project. If you see the structures throughout town, the fire hydrants and valves are painted white and they're using listening devices to look for leaks and that's, that's citywide. The north switching station is back online and we're using our north and south sixty-nine KV feeds. And then we should be finishing up the south substation project next month. Park and Cemetery, they're right in the midst of the Joy Christmas and Terry's also working on the the event. Can't remember what they called it, but Christmas display, I want to say. And we're attending the job meetings that are occurring at the R and B's project. And I believe that's, I believe that's everything I have, Brian.
All right, very good. We all received the bill list for October twentieth. Any comments or questions on it? If not, I need a motion to read the resolution as an emergency.
Jumbo. Seconded.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Elio?
Yes.
Noel? You're muted, Rick.
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter? You're muted, Ted. You're still muted, Ted. I know you're trying.
No pressure, Ted.
If you're using a computer.
If you're using a computer, you should be able to just hold down the space key.
Space, space bar?
Space bar and that'll unmute you.
Jennifer might be able to unmute you too.
I couldn't, I was, it tells me I can ask him to unmute and I've been clicking asked, but it's not working.
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
All right, resolution number twenty dash R dash five six one, emergency. An emergency resolution authorizing the city manager to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission. State capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement program and to execute contracts as required.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Have a roll call, please.
Noel?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Atilio?
Yes.
Ted, did your wife do that to you?
All right, so we're good. Um, Lance, will there be any action after the executive session?
Uh, no.
Okay. Uh, then we'll do council comments right now.
Lance, just a question. There was a comment on Facebook the other day about the dog park and the, for the, uh, was under. Uh, they were starting collecting funds and so on. Their location had been decided for, is that part of the information we'll be getting into next meeting?
Yes, um, you know, I mentioned in my manager report couple, couple, uh, probably a month ago. That, uh, kind of revived that, uh, R and B project and, uh. Gonna start, you know, fundraising here, here soon, but, uh, I believe they're going to go to. Um, the park board and, and, and discuss it further. And then, you know, once we get the funds or, once they get the funds, then they'll head back to park board with, uh, an, an engineering design. But, uh, there is a general location that H R G had in their master plan. Uh, a few years back that was presented to both park board and council. And I would be, uh, more than happy to share that with you, but the current, the current, um. Walking trail where you pull up the park, if you're, if you're driving. You know, you come by the park shop, you come by the baseball field and you, you pull up there, uh, you see a entrance sign. To the, uh, walking trail, uh, pretty much straight ahead and to the right, uh, inside that loop. Uh, was, was their original spot, I believe.
Yeah, I, I had recalled that there was an awful lot of wooded area in there that'll probably have to be cleared out, the underbrush and stuff. But anyway, thank you. Could, you know, the, uh, dog park is a special interest of mine.
Yeah, it'll, um, they're, they're really ramping up, getting ready for, uh, you know, fundraising. And, and, uh, they're going to have a little video and, uh. Hopefully, uh, we can share it with you and, and you guys can share it on Facebook and hopefully we get a lot of hits. This will be the first crowdfunding, uh, project that I know of that, um. You know, it's going to be done within this, within the, within the community and R and B's, you know, willing to take that on.
I mentioned this at the beginning of the meeting, but I want to emphasize that the council approved the Christmas parade in November twentieth. It is going to be called, uh, there's going to be some changes, but it's going to be called the Christmas drive-through spectacular. And, um, basically the parade is going to be parked on the street, on Main Street. And, uh, there's a lot of logistics we're working on, the committee is working on. And, uh, I want to mention that, uh, Eric Offenberg and myself are meeting with Chief Gladys, uh, tomorrow morning. And, uh, chief has been really great at assisting us with working on the, uh. On the various components of, of getting this event to be pulled off. So you're going to be hearing more about it through publicity through the, uh, chamber of commerce.
But Scott, it's not a parade.
Yeah, it's a not.
There isn't, uh, there's, it's a not parade.
I got you.
No parade.
Any other comments? I, I, I personally have one. Um, uh. Uh, everyone knows that in two weeks is the, uh, election and I'm not going to make any political comments. Um, but I have, uh, every intention tonight of letting you all know that win or lose. Uh, I intend to step down, uh, the end of this year, um, regardless of what happens. I, I think that because next year is an election year for the mayor seat. Uh, and knowing there's even a chance that I couldn't be in it to fulfill that whole year. Uh, my intention will be to, um, step down before the end of, of December, uh, which would place. Uh, Rick Noel, the council president in the mayor's seat. So I wanted to give you all, uh, ample time to plan on that. We, we still have four meetings through the end of the year. And, uh, so that should give ample time to do that. Uh, but I also wanted to take the opportunity just quickly to state why. Uh, I believe in term limits, um, I have from day one. It's why I served one year or one term on council. Uh, I think if a president can affect a country in eight years, uh, no one needs to be in this position that I've been doing for more than that. So, um, in, in the past eight years, we've accomplished the Dora, the CRA. Uh, we got the nicest place in America. Um, I think one of the biggest accomplishments is how we've all worked together. And how things have changed since we started. And, um, so I, I don't want to get emotional tonight, but I wanted to at least let you all know my intention. And, um, set, set that ball rolling because I know there'll be a lot, lot of time and discussion in, uh, where things go from here.
Well, Brian, I'll just say thank you for your service. Um, you know, we've, we've butted heads a few times, but I've learned a lot from you. So I wanted to just tell you how much I appreciate what you've taught me over the past couple of years of, of, uh. You know, either before I served on council or in my time on council. So.
And I'll, I'll, I'll make some more formal statements before I'm done. But I, I, I really tonight just wanted to give you guys a, a heads up, uh, because I, I know there's a lot, a lot on the plate, a lot going on. Um, but I, I, I didn't want to spring it on anybody and say, okay, next meeting, I'm out of here and you got an open spot and. Not, not six people on council. So with that bomb, is there anything else?
I, I can't top that. Nope.
Um, well, then I need a motion to go into executive session regarding the discussion of collective bargaining unit section one twenty-one point two-two G four.
So Brian, did, Brian, did you want to see if there's any public comments or did I miss you say that?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I guess I did not. Is there anyone that has public comments? Doesn't look like it. All right.
Yeah, did we do the first resolution twenty R five sixty-one?
Yep, yeah, we did them all. Yeah, I took, I took B and C out of order so that they didn't have to wait any longer. And then we just did the emergency separately. Now, did we have a motion in a second, Deanne?
I move.
Okay. Me? Okay.
So we're.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Atilio?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
It's good to hear your voice Ted.
So I think here we go, that, that breakout room button. And, um.
Yes, just go to the breakout room button and it's, everybody's already assigned, so you should just have to join.
Yeah, and there will be no action afterwards. So, see, see everyone else later.
Okay, where's the breakout room button?
Bottom.
Okay.
Right inside.
Okay, I'm not seeing one either.
You see.
iPad.
See if I can send you there. No. Um, hang on a second, let me try this.
Under more.
Do you have something that says more?
No.
Make those rename. I can't.
Do you have anything that says reactions?
Nope. I just have Chief Gladys and Jennifer's name on the screen.
Okay, move your cursor around. To move, move your cursor around to the bottom of the screen. And see if, see if a tab comes up.
It might say polling, share screen, more.
Uh, ah, keeps going off. I can't read what. I do have a more button now.
Okay, click that.
I clicked on more chat, meeting settings, minimize, disconnect. Which something, join breakout room. Okay.
Yes, yes. That's it.
Thanks, Jennifer.
You're welcome. Do I pause the recording or do you guys come back into here or what do you, are you?
Come back in here for one second to close the meeting out, um, but we could be in there for. You know, I think last time we were in there for like half hour or something.
Okay, so do you want me to keep recording or pause the recording and wait for you to come back in?
I. I, I don't know. It's, uh. Probably pause it.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
All right.
Second.
A roll call?
Deanne, you're muted.
You're muted now, Deanne.
Deanne, okay.
It's late. Uh, okay, Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Good lord, yes.
Atilio?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
This is, this is painful.
That was a long meeting.
I'm thirsty.
Yes, it was.
Well, at least we all have day jobs too, right?
No.
Yeah.
No, we don't.
Don't remind me.
Yeah, no kidding.
I'm tired. So.
I'll move to adjourn.
All right, so moved and I don't even get to make seconds.
But you'll second that one.
Yeah.
Hey Brian?
Yeah.
Good luck next week, or in two weeks.
Thank you.
Hey, good luck, Brian.
We'll, uh, we'll see how it goes. I'm keeping my fingers crossed.
I think, I think you're in good shape.
See you later.